Called to order, citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to stay during that agenda item by board chair. Citizens may comment on anything related to school district business not during on this agenda during this public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens after identifying themselves will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules decorum are in effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual statement for inappropriate, including when statements are out of order to lengthy breach personal privacy rights are abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. And going forward here, we will have four minute time periods for public comment now. Cecilia is going to take care of the little timer there for us. So you'll be able to kind of see as you're speaking how much time you have left. And then the other thing I'd like to ask everybody makes a public comment to please contact either Cecilia or Dr. Wisher with a a contact number so that she can get together with you concerning what you know your a public comment. So I, we were thinking about putting maybe phone numbers on here, but we thought some people might not be comfortable with that. But please do contact either one of them with a contact number that where she can reach. Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as.
I'm getting biased that for the consent agenda, you only need one motion to approve the consent agenda. Of the items listed there. So everybody can go through the approval of the agenda, the approval of the minutes of prior meetings.
We don't have those yet because from last week, all the rest.
The other ones have been approved, so we don't have any approval. So, and we don't have a district substitute this year.
Yep, that was on there.
It's in there.
Okay. Okay. Yes, it is. All right. So I guess we need to vote to approve the consent agenda.
I just have one question on the subs. I know subs are hard to come by, but do we have, do you guys review the list and kind of call out maybe subs that are not performing adequately, or is that even an issue at all? Or do they all seem to do a good job?
You want to know for me?
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, I guess I was.
I guess that can be handled different ways depending on what the severity or what it was, right? So you can coach them through things, talk through it, but that list goes through the office and through the main office.
Okay.
I don't know how it's done here, obviously, yet. The way I've treated substitute lists in other schools is they're usually substitutes who are favored over others, and those are usually the ones who are really good. They know the kids, they know the school, they can come in and just pick up any classroom and run with it. And those are the subs who are usually in the building most often. If we were to come across someone who were in the building and were not doing a good job, we would address that kind of as Inspire is pointing out, you know, just some redirections. So, you know, maybe they don't know better and give them an opportunity to improve. But then if we had continuous problems, then then they would be removed from the list. Now, obviously, if there were anything unethical or, you know, just inappropriate, illegal, then that we would take other actions there. But typically, you know, the good ones are going to get called first because we know who they are. And then anyone else, if we were to have issues, we would just try to resolve those issues.
And just so you know, the teachers rate the substitutes five stars, and then we do a narrative of multiple subjects, like, you know, did they follow the lesson plan? You know, what was, you know, and I mostly just leave feedback forms as well.
Okay.
So they can make things out, so.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and all the things except for we need to change the title of the form of the substitutes because it says 2122 instead of 2223. Other than that, everything's perfect.
I think it needs to be updated too. I see one person here who said this is sub, and she's now a second grade teacher. Katie Hawes, right?
True story.
So maybe, yeah.
Adding to my motion and removing Katie Hawes' name. There's the motion.
The discussion, all in favor? opposed? Okay. Public participation, Krista.
This is a budget meeting for the budget. The previous superintendent had $50,000 budget set aside for a teaching tool that at one meeting, eight teachers sat here and openly admitted that they've never used. Some didn't even know the name of the teaching tool, 50K. To my knowledge, there are now eight para professionals that have quit and are not resigning their contract. West Valley is seriously lacking in support of their para professionals. My 15-year-old is making more per hour at Jimmy John's than a para professional who has worked here for four years. Where is the money going? I can walk the halls and see computers for every student in each classroom. My kids take their spelling test looking at a computer. But what is going to happen when we don't have parents here to teach? I don't see any ad hire, any ads for hires on our website. I haven't seen any being hired on the agendas. What are all of the children with 504s or that that need a little special assistance like IEP is going to do this year? Since January, West Valley has hired one para according to the agenda and minutes. This is a budget meeting, and I'm advocating and encouraging the board to find the money to support the para professionals because there are children who really need them and will seriously struggle without them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Krista. West Valley Parent Teachers Association, what's got anything?
I know that they are planning to do something for the first day of school. So I think they're doing some signage and some other people were. Yeah, we got an email about it today, sent us in the works to do something upfront for the kids. That was all we talked about all summer, so.
Yeah. Good, thank you. Okay, rest of the teachers organization. We've got a report?
We're good.
Too much planning and chaos right now, right?
All right, principals reports.
No new report, this is.
Thank you. I superintendent.
I have nothing to.
All right, action, action items, consideration of parking lot seal coating. You can see the quote here. $1,750 to patch the asphalt, hot rubber crack seal, seal coat parking lot, and we stripe it. Now, does anybody know if that's about reasonable for what parking lots go for these days? I don't have a clue, except I'm sure that because of the oil situation, it's expensive.
It is expensive, and I think that's pretty reasonable for, I mean, on par from what I would expect. The thing we have to consider is how much longer do we try to continue to seal cracks and re seal coat the whole entire parking lot versus scraping it down and repaving it. But I think, I mean, just looking at it, it'd probably be reasonable just to seal it a couple more times and see how it goes.
Especially with the hope that maybe we'll be opening a new school. And hate to put 10,000 doors in front of you anyway. Yeah, but this could be a good stopgap for now.
Do we know when the last time that they did this, well?
So from what I understand, the different parts of the campus, there's kind of a rotation because we also have blacktop area on the playground and the basketball area. They've kind of stopped the staff parking over here because it's just such a mess that it's not worth continuously patching the ceiling. So there is kind of a rotation where each summer a different part of the campus gets attention. This always gets resealed every year because of the ice and
Just traffic flow.
Right, but as far as the complete, it's getting its complete little facelift for, so I would imagine, I think it's like a three-year rotation from what Phil has told me. And so in the next summer, they would do just the crack seal out here, but then they would do like the full treatment to the other parts of the campus that's blacktop. And I do think the price has gone up, Cecilia pulled previous because they were trying to get an idea of what it was, but they originally just showed up to do work.
Last year was this area over here and then the back.
There's the east, yeah, I think it's the east side and must have a part of the front.
And just the rubber seal.
Elementary park, elementary playground.
Yep.
Yeah, and it was small by last year.
Right, and this area is definitely larger than all of that if you're going to.
Yeah, and part of it has to do with the ADA compliance of remarking those spaces.
Yeah. I mean, it's expensive, but it doesn't seem ridiculous compared to kind of, you know, I think they wanted to, I think mine was like $1,300 of a house or something, which is far smaller than that parking lot. And, you know, it's going to be cheaper than repaving it in their terms.
And I asked if there are other companies, because I don't mind doing all the shopping around. And the feedback that I got in the rubber day is that they've tried other companies and their material like, like the before the summer was even over and blowing up on the sidewalk. So this company may be a little bit pricier, but they did quality work. Been it for at least the last three years that I saw, but.
That's what happened to me because I saw the $1,200 bill, then I did it myself, and then I just all peeled up. So don't hire me. I'm really bad. I'll make a motion to approve the parking lot seal coating and estimate that we were given. I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Next. Action item consideration of hiring Justin LaScala, a great volleyball coach. We have his coaching experience and his resume here in front of us.
Has he coached at West Valley before?
No.
Does he have students at the school?
Yes.
Yes.
And I guess just from a email that we received too, I guess, like, what's the hiring process whenever it comes to athletics? Is it the same as a hiring process as the school? I don't think it has been, and that is something that I will bring to you in the September meeting is we'll have a process that you for all higher positions in the district. Essentially making sure that we are advertising internally according to board policy and then doing proper external advertising. I think with some of the coaching positions, it's more of a word of mouth. Do you know anyone? And that's kind of how maybe some of the positions have been filled. I don't know that it's been very consistent. But moving forward, we will have a consistent hiring procedure that is consistent with our policy and the teacher's CBA. If that's applicable.
Well, it looks like he has some good experience and connection to school, so I'll make a motion to approve Justin for the volleyball coaching position.
I'll second it. Any further discretion?
Other than I appreciate what you're saying about trying to standardize this moving forward. You know, it looks to me like this CD was maybe received after the fact because it was written in an email form that just happened at the end of last week. And so I don't know what communication was done before that or how he was chosen or how that selection process was done. So I think having something in place that talks about what you described as something more standardized and.
And I think he was kind of called up at the transition between not just superintendents, but also athletic directors. So that just created a little bit more opportunity for some miscommunication, but that's something we'll definitely have cleaned up in the future.
I love that idea.
Any further discussion? All right.
Marilyn, this is one I had a public comment on also, if you look at the. It's okay.
Oh, it's in fine print right here, action item.
I put two things on there, yeah, sorry.
Okay. But that would be since it was an agenda item, you would be discussing it here at the beginning anyway, so.
Right, yeah, that's what I meant. If that's okay. My timer, am I okay? Just to be standard.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I titled this one coaching position. I've had children at West Valley School since 2014. I may have children here till the end of 2026 school year. I've applied and asked every year since 2014 to be a coach within the basketball program. I even spoke in front of the board about it before as well. I've always met with excuses like we have it covered or parents can't be coaches. I played high school basketball, I played college basketball, yet I've always been met with a no. I was given the opportunity to coach a team from the fifth graders from West Valley last year through the Rotary Program. The same group of individuals that played the West Valley School ball with a few additionals from the other school, and we lost only one game in the championship. Who does this person know and how did they get their job? I don't know this person, and I'm in no way criticizing him personally. I just want to know, how did they, how did they do it? Because it's very apparent that I've been doing it all wrong all of these years. Our children deserve to be given the, every opportunity to be successful. And when we just fill coaching positions with teachers instead of qualified individuals, we most definitely are not looking out for the best interest of our children and providing them the best opportunity to be successful. I'm not even saying pick me or only me. I believe there needs to be a standard process of hiring, not just a who you know and who you talk to type of system. Make a job opening on the website, take applications, interview, and pick the best suited to fulfill the position as you should with any position within the West Valley School system. So it's kind of stuff you already talked about, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we still have to have a vote on that.
Okay, I was in favor. For now, I understand we have to get a coach on board soon here about the beginning. So for now, before we get this other selection process in place, I was in favor of hiring Justin. Opposed? Justin is in for a coach. The next action item consideration of other district student attendance agreements.
Do we have a link on this one or no? No, so right now we've received back 44 out of district agreements. We're at 63 total that we're expecting back for students that have already been here or they have a sibling, so they're coming in, maybe they have, they're coming in from kindergarten. So right now we've received 44 back.
So 63 last year and 44 of the 63.
Have turned it in so far for this year.
Turned it this year, and they're all, they were all attendees last year.
Yes, yep, except for, like I said, unless there's a kindergartner that maybe they had an older sibling, then.
You accept the younger siblings?
That's been a policy.
And we're not planning on accepting new, new out of district students at this point.
So the MTSBA recently sent out, they did their little question of the week update email. And it's about out of district transfers, and I've read through it, I've read through policy, and I'm even on as far as the state law to try to make sense of that. My understanding is ultimately it is up to the Board of Trustees to either accept or deny. So you decide whether students are accepted or not. What I'm trying to kind of clarify with that is the email last week related to the question of the week had concerns basically around discriminatory practices and being careful that you have, that you're very clear, like you discussed employee students. So you can't just say we're only going to accept children of school employees and not other people who are choosing to try to send their students here out of district that that can be construed as a discriminatory practice. So I want to kind of look at it and be sure that we are following the policy and more specifically the state law whenever it comes to those transfers. That, and since there are mandatory where we have to take students, those instances with even Kenny Bento, which is the Federal Homeless Protection Act, and then military students, the military family were to come in. And then it gets into some other incidences where you've traveled over a pass is too hazardous and a student can go, yeah, it gets very detailed about some more unique type situations as far as out of district transfers. But as far as those that can be, that are what's considered discretionary, it says, my understanding is if accepting a student would put us over the class limit impacting our accreditation standing, that that would be grounds to deny. Otherwise, students should be accepted, otherwise you're looking at possible. They could say that they're being discriminated against because what, maybe someone else in, but not them.
I think that in general, that, I agree with what you're coming up to the last one, I think it's kind of challenging with that last question because you have to also kind of consider enrollment growth in that, in that number and to say, you know, we have, you know, in districts, you know, student growth and just because one year you could fit five more kids in second grade doesn't mean the next year there's 10 too many kids in third grade, which is, which is a challenge to balance there.
So it does make it difficult with us. I just think you want to read and learn and be as clear as I can be on what is intended so that I can give you as much feedback as possible just so that we're following policy and state law. But there's, I don't think there's any reason tonight to to not move forward with item C. And I haven't seen, or is there a form, Cecilia, that goes back and forth between the districts? Yeah, so they fill it out and then Laura has them currently, and then she inputs them. And then once, you know, the board either approves or denies it, then I send it to their school of either residents or, you know, maybe it's one of our kids going out, that's a possibility too. But these ones are all students coming in that we have. And each of them do pay the tuition, which these ones, I think a few of them have, but most of them have not at this point. So then, I mean, comes school time, you know, they have to pay or.
So you get the tuition and the A and B mistake. And it doesn't sound like there's any surprises with the kiddos that are on this list, so I think it'd be okay with me to go ahead and approve it. But I like the idea of maybe standardizing something and maybe a policy moving forward so that we have something to kind of protect us moving forward, like these are the considerations for accepting students. And that way we have something to base our decisions on moving forward.
Right, and that's clear to understand because the law is
It's the law.
helpful.
Yeah.
And one thing that we could do moving forward, the board would choose is we could, you could review the applicant sent a closed session and to actually, because we can't put the students' names on the agenda, but you could have a closed session where you would actually, actually review the applications that are coming in if that were something that you wanted to do in the future.
I guess I think it's almost less of a discriminatory risk for us to review them based on kind of a broad principle rather than even individually. Because obviously at this point, I have no idea who the 43 students are. I guess my position on it is we talk to the public routinely about how proud of the school is. And I think we just have to be careful with the perception that we're kind of adding to the overcrowding at this point, and that's why I guess I feel like the students who are here and the siblings of students who have already been accepted as out of district students, I think it's reasonable to continue with those, but until we get to the point where potentially we don't feel as though we're overcrowded, I think we should restrict, you know, additional out of district attendance outside of those specific laws and regulations we have to comply with.
Yeah, I don't remember when, how long ago it was, but that was, that was real concern. I can remember the former superintendent sitting here saying, no more students. No more students except the students, you know, the sit wings of kids that were here because of the overcrowding. And I was just, it was a blanket statement. And I think that's the way that the Sbat School Board really felt. And, you know, with, with overcrowding, I don't care how much money they bring with them, unless they bring a classroom. So, yeah, so we need, I think the idea of broadening it and just saying, well, it is, I think we go back in the minutes. I think it does say that no new students.
Except, it does not. Read for two years of minutes.
Yeah, it was open discussion stuff, but we never actually had a formal action on it. So, because we've never had a formal policy either, and I think that's what we probably should do moving forward, just to make sure that we don't accept that one student that puts us at risk for somebody coming back and saying, hey, wait a minute.
I think what's more likely to happen is that someone gets denied.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and they file a complaint. That would be the greater risk. It's not accepting someone that will cause a problem, I think it would be denying someone. But for the next meeting, I'll look at those policies that are, do have one on discretionary attendance and pull that state law. And we can look at that further.
Okay. In the meantime, though, we can, we would make a motion to approve the 43 applications. As far as, I think school start. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the 43, 44 of our district kids?
I.
I, anybody opposed? Okay, so, and then going forward, Dr. Wisher will present something about where we go forward with this. Okay, a consideration of the 2223 elementary school handful. Which I went through it on a website here. I would like to have a little copy of that, I guess. It's pretty hard to go through that and look at every little thing in this timeframe.
I mean, I guess, is there anything that changed from last year or significantly or anything like that?
I mean, I guess, is there anything that changed from last year or significantly or anything like that?
Not that I can obviously see, but I, you know, reading it before and reading it now, I don't. Feel like there was anything, so you didn't know if there's anything edited other than the twenty-two, twenty-three.
I do not, those, the handbooks come from the principals.
There were some updates to the acceptable use policy as far as technology goes. And what I've asked the principals to put to the handbook is, is basically verbatim what district policy is. There are also some federal notices that we are. Required to have in, you know, your non-discriminatory. Statements, your McKenney Bento notifications, directory information, letting people know what is. Directory versus what is protected by FOB. You also have student family privacy information that's addressing specifically surveys. And that things that we're able to survey students about and not survey students. And that parents have access to preview those materials before we give them to students.
Most of that information, that last page.
It's what is mostly conservative. It doesn't necessarily impact day-to-day, but they are things that's either state or federal that we want to make sure parents have access to that information.
Had a few comments through it, I don't know, are you, Cecilia, are you gonna potentially change this, or maybe we could just, I guess, make notes, but. On, uh. Richard, I guess, I. So, just on page two, under bicycles, you know, the school cannot be responsible. I guess just from a wording standpoint, and so it's consistent with the middle school one, maybe we should say is not responsible. I just, and that was on page two. Six on the lost and bound, I just thought it was. Consistent with the other policy, cannot seem just kind of. Open for interpretation. Maybe this is an odd question too, like on this, the, the bus on page four, so if they get suspended. For the fourth offense, they're out for the remainder of the school year, is that? But I think if you had four offenses, maybe you'd be out until further review or something, I don't know, if you just get to hop back on the bus day one of next year. But. Maybe it works so far, maybe nobody gets to four offenses. And then on page seven. Just the visitors to the school, it just. Speaks of preschool age siblings. Is it all siblings or just preschool age siblings? Interesting too.
Sounds like something left from one of the originals from a long time ago, I don't know.
Maybe it could be cleaned up at some point. I'm too big to do that.
Are we approving it, or is it already been printed?
You guys have to approve it first.
We have it printed, so I think this is still.
So changes could be made right now.
We won't have another meeting before it is.
Yeah.
And so we can make some adjustments. I do know as previous experiences, a, an elementary principal. That preschool age siblings are sometimes problematic because we, I've had instances where parents have volunteered. And they have brought their two three-year-olds, and now they're trying to volunteer in the classroom, but their toddler is over taking apart the. Reading corner.
I got you.
So I, I would imagine that is probably why preschool age siblings are named kind of specifically. Somebody probably had that specific problem at some point in the past. And then parents become, are they managing their younger child or are they volunteering?
I just didn't know if it should be all siblings, you know. But that's fine. And then just on page, page eight, it's, it says West Valley Parent Organization, I think it's. Parent Teacher Organization.
West Valley.
Oh, yeah. That one probably should be changed.
So, yeah, I guess my only, my only. Conditions of approval would be to be the. Changing that cannot to, is not responsible and that the. Parent Teacher Organization.
So we just make a motion based on those changes?
I believe so.
And approve.
So it should be West Valley Parent Teacher.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that's a good point, then there would be no confusion, because somebody may just take a look at that, think there was more than one of them.
Right, yeah.
That's good. Little enough things to know.
I'll second that motion.
For the discussion on the changes on the elementary handbook. He, all those in favor of accepting the elementary handbook with the changes?
I.
Are those posed? In the middle school handbook?
This is Blair sent you here, we're gonna pick on you a little bit, is there anything newer additions that we need to be super aware of?
Changed the staff. Updated a little bit of the dress code with some student-friendly language, talked to some teachers at KMS and administrative there. And our leadership team wanted a, it's basically the same laws about it, but they wanted to put the picture back in. So we used to have a picture that showed a person like covered from armpit to here, and they asked for the picture to be back in, that we are covered from armpit to here. So. Anyways, and so we added a picture. To that, another change is on athletic eligibility, changing ours. And we used to use a learner attribute of strides for quality work. And after talking with parents and the teacher leadership team and who they've talked to, we changed that just to, to work ethic, I think, and they think that it's. More common terminology to say work ethic, and parents know what that means if their child's low in work ethic and we're saying, you know, that encompasses them. Whether they're not turning things in, different items versus strides for quality work. Strides for quality work was perhaps more narrow and. And then I think it puts it in line with KMS and some of the others that we use, the, the work ethic. As the learner attribute.
So just to be clear on that, so if, if a student had an N. They would be disqualified, or if they, no?
No, that, and that would just kind of, that depends on why, I'm not saying that that couldn't. But what we're looking at on the run across, so when we do a run of the rosters about who qualifies or doesn't any given time. Then if their learner attribute for work ethic. Was an N.
Okay.
Yes.
I got you.
It's one thing if you are, if that's your, your capability and you have an N, you should still be able to play your sport if that's. True in your capability, but if your work ethic isn't there. There's a lot that falls underneath that that's under expectations, but. Then there's a probationary period and then a chance to come back.
I think that clarifies, it makes it a little bit easier for people to, to follow, especially with the grading system. I like the term like that, workout, too.
If we have a Cal in here, okay. And a Cal. It just says questions related.
Yeah, Cal, you just need to search that. Then on page thirteen. Yeah, I think page thirteen, I was gonna get embarrassed. How do you spell passes? Yeah, S S E S S?
No, 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 no.
Nope.
Just one S.
Just one S. Turning into Mississippi. I questioned myself there.
And then all the language that is added to the end, and the, the signature form is on the middle school and for parents for the technology for parent and student. For the use, because that. In the past few years, we have not printed that out, but we want to print that out for parents. It has been available online, but we're going to ask for that signature page this year.
Anything else other than switching Cal and then out, passes? I'll make a motion to approve. Middle school handbook, subject to those changes.
More discussion. Yeah, all those in favor? School handbooks, approved with that one change. Hey, now, the consideration of the twenty-two, twenty-three. At some point, somebody was referring to what percentage of the total budget. Say, of personnel. I think it was, and that's not here, where do we, where do we get?
So that would be our line budget, which is what, you know, we're still working on, this is. So what you guys are approving with this is what, this is the money that we're getting from the state, this is the pool of funds from the taxpayers. So this is what funds our general fund. And then I guess our other budget funds, which would be. Transportation, bus appreciation, retirement tuition, so, and those are taxpayer funded. So you guys are proving the mills, which tells, tell me how to tax our taxpayers. And then. The rest of it is like state aid from the state.
So, so just to clarify, so we're approving the. Revenues associated with the budget, because the expense side is still in progress.
So. So our overall budget from the state with our tuition that we get is right now is at the five, five million. Right over five million. And then if you look on the other side where it shows our district mill levies. So that's what goes out to the taxpayers. And so on that one, I think they were all fairly close, transportation, we did increase just for not knowing. What the expenses for our buses will be, so we did increase that one a little bit. And then if for some reason it was a little bit too high, then next year it would just be lower, so. Then the taxpayers would get that break next year if.
So you increase the tax levy on that, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. But, yeah, so Marilyn, our salaries are looking at about ninety-six percent of our total budget right now. So.
Now, and salaries meaning that also includes marriage.
Yes.
People, that, that, that's all staff labor.
And benefits too. So.
And that's at ninety-six percent of budget right now.
The benefit of that, with the retirement stuff too then?
Um, that's going to include like their health insurance, workers' comp unemployment, the benefits of the school that's in.
So I know the expenditure side isn't finalized yet, but just kind of referring back to the question from the audience there, so salaries, aides. Last year's budget, one hundred fifty-one thousand and change, current budget, one hundred seventy-eight thousand. Just one seventeen on the. Expenditures.
Okay, so that one is going to be. Yes. Okay, so this is not the most recent, because we're at two point eight for salaries. Right now. Is this a new one that you received?
Um, you know, I pulled it off. Gmail this afternoon, so I'm not sure.
So I've been working on it the last few days, so maybe it just isn't the most recent, but yeah, we're at two point eight right now for salaries on the first line, I know right offhand. But then you also have to add in, so like this is like the general fund, so that's teacher salaries, that's just for. Just teachers.
Yeah.
So then if you look at the salaries for the aides, substitutes, but then you also have the guidance, so it's, it's really, yeah.
I guess I was just wondering, was the expectation that we would have the, the same number of aides? This coming school year?
So that would be, that's not up to me, that I don't, that would be up to. Principals and Cindy as far as who hires and who needs what. I just do the math.
So we are, one of the things that we are evaluating, the principals and I, is hire, we are going to advertise for additional paras. And. One of the things that I'm looking at, and I, I am being slow to move on things, is spending money. And being sure that, do we need more paras in looking at the current. Schedules that the principals have and what they need to operate the schools. I would say that we do need at least one more. There are some other. Accountability questions that I have that aren't necessarily run through us as far as student needs that aren't, they're not. They're just not documented in a way that. I think they should be. Student service minutes should be documented on a minute basis, and right now it's very generalized, a student needs one-on-one support. Five minutes of support, or do they need five hundred minutes of support? Because those minutes turn into dollars, and we need to be sure that, yes, we're making the needs of the students, but we're doing it in a financially responsible way. So that is something that I have been looking at paperwork. And student schedules, student needs, and talking to the principals about what's needed. Because personnel is our largest expense. There are other things that we obviously also have to have to operate school. So I am. Everyone who had. It was here last year, had the opportunity to return this year. And based on what we looked at today with schedules, we will be having one opening. We will see how school starts and what the needs are with the students and the classes. And then if we need additional paras support, we will add additional paras support at that point.
Do you feel as though this budget covers that additional para and potentially more if needed?
That I'm not, I can't speak to right now because we haven't gotten into the line items yet. Also have not, and this is for me to do. We've not applied for grants yet this year, so that's federal money that we also receive. That is something that next year I'm going to work on additional funding. And that is an area, that is a funding source that we can use for salaries. I think one of the challenges that we're going to experience this year whenever it comes to funding and money in general. Is schools, this one included, I've got very comfortable for the last couple of years having extra best for money. And we don't have that cushion anymore. So whereas money was spent on things the last couple of years, that money's not available now. So. That is another reason why I'm trying to be slow and thoughtful about spending. Because. What we have is about to last the whole year. what we have is about to last the whole year. We're not getting, we're not getting more.
To answer the question, yes, so another para or two, if needed, is we have a cushion in there, which I have left in that situation that we do need to hire a parent too. So it won't put us over budget, but I'd rather have that cushion. And so right now it looks like we already have one or two paras in there, even though we don't, because then we can always use that money elsewhere if needed later on, but I'd rather account for it in the salaries right now.
Then if there is a cushion, that would make it the ability anyway to potentially look at their salary and look at their hourly rate and see if it's something we can adjust or.
And my, my first look is always going to be what, what are the actual student needs? What do the students in the building need in order to learn at their fullest potential? And being sure that in many instances, we're documenting that accurately and appropriately. So that we could justify the financial obligation that we're making to our students. And then from there, looking at, you know, meeting that minimum, and then what can we do above and beyond? While still be financially responsible.
Just want to share that in the 1920s school year, I think we had 15.5 para professionals in the 1920 year. With the SRF funds, we had to separate the kids. We had to make the groups larger, meet more often, and we brought more on. And through attrition, if some of them leave, as long as the student needs, needs are met, we may not need to bring the numbers up to the same that we had during COVID, the number of people. For those to be able to help the children's needs that we have. We're talking an inflated number of paras over the last two years. Especially a lot, you know, we have the last two years that we needed just to cover the cleaning, the separation and the different expectations that were there. And so although we do have more children than we did in the 1920 year, I would think that eventually the numbers would reflect and be relative to that. And not necessarily what we were able to do with the SRF funds and that we needed to do with them, which is what was asked to do in order to cover those different bases and the expectations. So as we look back, we have to look at the last couple of years as being somewhat as oddities, just like you're saying. The funding was different, amount of money coming in was different.
But the needs were different as well. So the things that were necessary from March 20 on, they we don't have to do the same things. So we don't necessarily need as many people to do the work that needs to be done.
So I'm understanding, I think you were, was it 2020?
Yeah.
Then comparing that 19 to 20 school year to now, we feel comfortable that we have the amount of student needs anyway to be met.
And we'll look at that, you know, with Dr. Mishra, I shared numbers with her, showed her what the needs are, what the kids are, what the planning is. And she was able to identify with us, okay. It looks like probably one more, right? But I think we can do that from within, if you left room. I just wanted to caution, when we look at those, the number of people that we had, what we had to cover, it took the people to do that is much larger.
And a lot of districts did spend their SRF money on salaries to hire additional custodians for the additional cleaning. They hired additional paras for tutoring support and things like that. But it was done with the understanding that those positions would have to fade away because the money would be going away.
But the need is to, I mean.
Right. And there's, the cleanings isn't being done to the same degree. The tutoring would love to see that continue to happen at the same degree. But then we still have to, you know, find that balance between what, what students need and what we can afford and then what we can do. You know, extra above that. The way I've always prioritized para assignments is special education, because that's, we have to follow IDEA for IEPs and 504s. The next is student supervision, because that relates directly to our safety and ensuring that students are supervised and kept safe. And then from there, we're looking at intervention instruction, that's additional instruction above what the classroom teacher is doing. So and that is kind of how Tina and Richard have tiered out their para assignments as their, their special education, their supervision, the incentive and our mission support.
So again, I guess the next question is what do we pay our pairs?
I mean, it's based on the classified salary schedule that's been in place. So each year they get whatever the teachers union negotiates, which has been 2% for the last two years. So classified staff gets that as well, plus they get their step, which is another increase. In 2020, I believe, the board approved giving us it was like an extra 50 cents if they had a degree. So I mean, they've had it's not that they're not getting raises. I mean, it's, it's just at a different pay scale than the teachers. So they have their own pay scale as far as like custodial staff, paras, kitchen staff. I mean, they're on their own pay scale, separate from the certified.
Assuming if we were to look at those contracts and make any adjustments to that, we'd have to go back to the union and discuss those things there too.
I just not have a.
They don't have it. They're not in the union, so be on their own. Okay. I mean, that's something that it would be nice to maybe look at moving forward, just what that pay scale is and what it looks like. And if there is any adjustments that we potentially have to buffer room to do and.
Sure. So my proposal then would be to give Cecilia decent time and let us do some comparisons between other districts and see what their, not just para salary scales are, but also kitchen staff, custodial. See how we kind of call, how we compare to similar districts. And, and kind of go from there and then also looking at what kind of ripple effect would changes in the pay scale have to the overall budget. So I said that, that will take a little bit of time to dig through all of that. But we can get that together and bring it in at a later date.
Yeah.
I think it would be great to compare, you know, what similar schools where we are.
Are we able to get similar information on teacher pay scales as well?
Yes.
That'd be interesting to see as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think overall, really for the school. Just have a general idea of where we're at. A comparison of, of all employment levels and what other positions. I'd be curious to know what those are being viewed as well. Because I do think it's, it's good to be competitive pay wise. But
And for these new members of the board, at the end of last year's cycle, we did kind of do those comparisons and look at how things were compared to other schools in the administration level and made some adjustments there. So that's wonderful, but I think, yeah, I mean, that same kind of thing going forward with the teachers and the staff and paras and all that stuff would be wonderful too.
Yes. So how does that affect this budget that we're there?
What are the, what are the kind of, do we, are we running against the deadline here? I guess I feel.
Yes.
Personally. Maybe we could talk about as far as the actual levies being applied here. What is potentially up for discussion? I guess I feel uncomfortable voting on a budget that only approves revenues and doesn't have a complete expense report.
I feel like you're blind. It's like, is there enough to support what the expenses are? Sure, I guess it's kind of.
Or vice versa, you know, I think ultimately we're, we're voting to approve a levy on the taxpayers. And I feel like on both sides, right, it'd be, it'd be nice to be comfortable to understand that you feel like the revenues are sufficient for the expenditures and similarly you don't want to be construed like you're.
So if you.
Charging more than technically maybe.
Because I'd put on there the 22 previous year. So you can go back and compare what the taxes were and what was this levy for on each fund. So like I said, the transportation fund did increase this year just with, you know, fuel prices. Possibility of additional buses. So that one did go up. The tuition fund, that one pays for our crossroads and fly had special education. So that one is pretty much to the dime what we owe them. Yeah, and that does increase. And I get that information from the superintendent's office, what we're going to be charged for crossroads and the special like co-op. Retirement fund, that's kind of a calculation. There's an online calculator that pretty much calculates out what our retirement needs are. And so that's where that one comes from.
And that just allocates out of teacher payroll and then our own contribution.
State funding, county funding. Yep. So retirement comes from both state and county. They both contribute to that. The adult education, we left that one alone. I didn't increase that one. Actually, I think that one might have went down a little bit just because we didn't have a need to increase it. So that one did go down a little bit. Our technology fund last year was depleted due to the excess spending. So we're looking at, you know, pretty much starting over in that one. So that one's minimal at 5,000. And same with the flexibility fund, that one was depleted last year as well. Death service fund, that's for our current school bond that we have. And so that one's set in stone, again, almost to the penny, what we can levy on that one. And then the building reserve fund again is where things like the asphalt or the seal coating, gym floors, you know, to bigger maintenance projects, that's where that comes in. So I mean, all of these are pretty standard as far as how they're calculated. It's not that I just went in and made up numbers. And said, oh, let's just pick $40,000 to put in here. It's, it's, it's calculated. Our general fund is, again, like I said, it comes from the state. They tell us what we get. I mean, I can't ask more than what we get for. Just on that one. And they calculate that off of our A and B.
If I remember right, we have a must submit before the 22nd or 25th.
So the 20th, which is Saturday.
A lot of what's here is out of our control, correct?
So we're. This thing's not gonna, you know, for like, oh, well, it's not enough. We're gonna be like, okay. They're not gonna, right, they're not just gonna offer us more. That's where the E grants comes in and the title money helps supplement some of that.
So when the county superintendent signs up, I guess, we're going to assume that he has access to.
Yeah. And I actually sat with him at the county superintendent's office last week finalizing this and he helped me with the tuition fund. And their financial clerk there helped me with the other ones as far as the calculations. And so like I said, I mean, the, they're I feel that they are right where they need to be. I don't think that we've asked for too much on any fund other than the transportation. But again, we don't know what fuel prices are going to be and what, because the treasure state can adjust based on fuel and, you know, if we need another bus or enough bus route, you know. So that was the only one that might be a little bit higher, but I still feel it's going to be pretty close.
And Cecilia, transportation is one of the areas where you don't have to spend out by the end of the year. It could go to reserve and then you could charge the taxpayers less next year and pull it back from reserve. Right? So.
And I think this is, I mean, we're being a little conservative on this, which is nice too, so we can actually report back to the public if they have questions that like. We did a budget that was actually 730,000 less than what we potentially could have approved just based on the maximum budget limits based on taxable amounts and our state amounts. So I think we're not like looking at this in a way of like just wasting our taxpayers' money that we're actually doing a pretty good job staying under that max. But we're at the max without a taxpayer vote.
Yes. And that would give us that additional 737, yeah, the 700,000.
So just to clarify, so they obviously, so you have the, you know, you have the A and B and then the transportation fund is a separate local taxpayer levy. Correct?
Yes, the transportation. Yes. So that one comes from taxpayers. So that's a permissive levy. So that's like automatic levy.
Yeah. Are there, are these other ones, like the adult education and the building reserve or those permissive levies as well?
They are. Yep.
But ultimately, the, the A and B specifically ties back, the 70.48 mils specifically ties back to the student count. It's not.
So the state, they gave us, I think it was 4.9 was it 4.9 million from their aid and then like I said, with that $45,000 in tuition, which could be a little bit more depending on how many our district kids. So that makes up the five million that we have to operate on.
Do you have the per student cost? Do you have it broken down like? When you look at the report cards for West Valley, like at the most recent report cards out, we have one of the lowest expenditures per student in the state and in the Northwest Montana. And our middle school especially is one of the lowest that we're paying per student. First, you know, eight, little over 8,000 per student in the middle school versus state average of 12 and the local average at about 11. And, and you can watch those things over time and time that you're running lean and there's always places to look for reductions or to watch out for constituents and the people that we help. But we're sometimes you're on the board for a while to, it's, there's different areas to look at that and see as you get to make options of spending things, but.
Why do you think that is?
One of the reasons is that we don't get the title funds. It's not a title school, right? So they're running about without going, asking for further levies. You know, some of those things are legal that you have to do, then end up permissive, things that you have to do end up permissive. And so you have to, you have these responsibilities and it ends up going up to permissive levy. So it doesn't overrun a school's A and B or, and we don't have other funding. I just think as it comes up across the year, just to spend through this, but as it comes up across the year, you will see how it gets relative to this. And it is kind of different to be receiving, agreeing to what you will receive. And then you have to work out how you will spend it, right? It's kind of different. I think it becomes more relative across the year. validity of it or whether it's rigid where it can.
Maybe moving forward, especially as we look at new levies in the future that we're asking for, that kind of information would be amazing to hand out to the public. Like, because this is our cost per student. This is like the other areas in the valley are doing and
If we hadn't had the SRF, the tech levies, students didn't pass, the tech wouldn't be there without us. So.
But you could only use SRF funds for specific pieces anyway.
Just as these funds she's speaking of, there's different they have the parameters on all of those different funds about how they can be used within a school. I think we use a lot of it to update our technology, I think so too. And, and so that's putting us in a pretty good position right now with new computers in the classrooms.
Yeah, we did a lot of that at the end of last year and during the year last year.
We put a lot of money into computers, which I should service well forward, I think, should be safe. We put a lot of money into computers, which I should service well going forward, I think. Should be safe for a while. I'm out here anyway.
Yeah, there are some big things besides that on, on all the Chromebooks and stuff like that that we.
On the budgeted expenditures. Is this. On the line basis, is this incomplete in your mind or is this?
That one is.
Incomplete. Did you send me one?
I did not on that one because I'm still working on it. So I think that was just giving you an idea. I think that was the preliminary budget. Just saying this is what we're looking at.
Yeah, it did say that.
So yeah, so no, I'm still. Dialing in on that one. So put in salaries first, school utilities, things lights, water, sewer, that kind of stuff and then.
When do you think that would be? Closer to being finalized?
Probably end of the week Cindy and I are gonna meet probably Wednesday about it and. Wednesday, Thursday, depending on scheduling, but.
I got you. And is the, on this. The OPI budget report says we adopt the final budget no later than August twenty fifth, but is that, or is it the twenty?
So it has to be turned to the state by the twenty fifth. The board has to have it approved by the twentieth.
I hate to say this, but I'd be more comfortable waiting for the line item expenditures to be finalized before the budget is approved.
I don't know that we should get that done. And. So you could do a lot of it. We can work on it some tomorrow, but we have new teacher orientation. And I, I'm not going to be here Thursday or Friday. To work with her on that. My kids have doctor's appointments on Thursday and I have to go to Washington on Friday to finish cleaning out my house. So. She has invested her time up until this point on getting this part done. The line item expenditure report. It's not going to take a little bit longer because it is much more dialed in and more specific in regards to.
I mean, the same pool, the same pool of money is going to save a little money no matter how that line item is rolling out.
I understand that. It's just, you know, from the principal standpoint as, as far as, you know, approving. Charge on the taxpayers, I would feel uncomfortable if expenditures were. More complete. This is a big difference if it's the twenty fifth. I know you said the twentieth, it says the twenty fifth on this.
Yeah, it has to be submitted to the state on the twenty fifth. And the board has to have it approved. So it gives the clerk that cushion to get it to the state after the board approves it.
Yeah, I guess I, if it said, I don't know, I'm not gonna. Go back and forth on it, but obviously there was a scenario where. You know, we could reconvene next Monday on the twenty second to review that prior to the twenty fifth.
Is this budget updated more than what we have from this first one that you sent out at all?
So you're talking about the line item ones?
Yeah.
Yes, because I've been working on it up until five o'clock today. So on the OPI calendar, it says annual final budget meeting. On the twentieth.
We have to.
Yes.
So yeah, on this that you have in front of us, what can be modified? What is there that is on this?
Yes. Nothing. I mean, the general fund is what that is right there. So what you're looking at on that line item is the general fund. That is what the state tells us. Seems to look to see if I pull up one that I was working on. To show you where the other funds are that are the tax levies.
When did you guys think you were originally planning on having the budget done by?
Last Monday. Well, the normal meeting was scheduled for last Monday.
We're gonna work on it this week on Wednesday and see how far we can get. The expenditure. Estimation, what I'm understanding, isn't going to change. The, the budget report that you're looking at today. What this, that sets the parameters and says this is, this is all the money that we have. And we can't spend any more than this. And so now we have to figure out how we're going to operate within. This revenue that is available.
So like I can show you on the tuition fund, what it was last year versus what it is this year.
Yeah, and I get, I mean, I do get that and, and I get the, you know, the fact that it's. You know, your approach where it is, you know, obviously this is, this is kind of the funding that we have. And there's not, you know, necessarily more or recently any expectations that we could operate with less. And I get, I do understand how much work you guys put into this over the summer and it's appreciated. I guess just in general from doing, you know, kind of my. Producery duty as a board member, my preference would have been to have, you know, more complete. Line item expenditure accounting for, for these revenues.
Which one are you questioning though? I guess. I mean, are you talking about the general fund? Because it's.
Yeah, that would be.
Okay, well, it's four point eight million dollars in salaries out of the five million. So I have twenty thousand dollars to pay the lights, to pay the water, to pay. The garbage pickup. Any supplies that the teachers need. So that's where, that's where I'm working at fine tuning right now. Is that kind of stuff. I'm getting the important stuff taken care of first, salaries and benefits. And then, like I said, utilities. And then, I mean, the playground out there, not free. So I'm figuring out how to pay for that out of this budget as well.
So when does the expenditures, a separate approved vote or is that something?
As far as I've known, it's always been the business manager's duty to, you guys give me the authority to, here's the money. And. You know, pay the bills. That's, I don't know that Cindy or Serena ever had to provide that other than the preliminary. This is probably what we're looking at. But that's even way before we even get the numbers from the state. I mean, you can guesstimate at that point when I probably provided that to you, which was a guesstimate at the time saying. We're probably going to get close to five million, but we didn't know until a later date when the state says, here's your pool of money. This is what we're giving you.
Yeah, I get that. I guess, but you know, I would have assumed that the. You know, again, obviously.
And that's why.
Pay your electricity bill, but there's.
And that's why each month I provide you guys the list of bills that I've paid. And then, well, I haven't paid them yet. You guys approve them and then the next day I go in and send out the checks. So you guys are approving the bills based off of what's coming in. Within the parameters of this budget.
Yeah, I get it. But from my standpoint, it's, it's the thing is, I guess from my expectations, it would be. And I know it's kind of all coming back through and this is my first time through. So maybe I'm a little.
Right, we'll say.
And, you know, not used to the, the school financing budget process, but it would be more back from kind of building up. From the, and you guys have probably done this. I'm just not seeing it here. Whereas, you know, here's, here's the student enrollment. Here's the classroom. Here's the necessary, you know, school, you know. Teacher requirements. And obviously we're a growing district, but it, you know, to me financially, that all makes sense. It flows up and to see kind of. You know, kind of the expenses build up to, and, and you have obviously your kind of defined revenue sources. But, you know, that's just the missing piece here is I'm, you know, from an approval standpoint, I don't know if I should be, you know, comfortable saying necessarily. You know, we should approve this or, and, and then obviously giving the discretion through, you know, the administration that. That the expenditures will just fall into place. Or if we're actually have more. Control over how the expenditures are allocated through the year.
Yeah, I think after going through this the first year, I understand where you're coming from too, especially voting to approve the last year's. It is like, holy moly, have to do what? The expenditure part of it was tough because it's more of a fluid thing throughout the year. Although we can kind of predict it, you know, unfortunately it's not the exact science and things kind of bounce from. Different pools along, along the year. And I think maybe. Is there a way to be sure like over the last like three to four years, how well we have. Been at balancing the expenditures versus the revenue and if we've come under those amounts, if we've been able to. Put aside things or how, how.
There was always a reserve. She was very frugal with the spending and she had absolute control of it. I don't know about Serena. I think she spent. A good portion of it. And last year, the budget was not handled at all with the excess spending that was taking place before I got here and after I got here, not knowing. I mean, everything, oh, two hundred and twenty thousand dollar curriculum. Do it. Done. Nobody questioned where that money was coming from. So then during the summer, I had to scramble and spent weeks and weeks and weeks trying to figure out how am I going to pay for this two hundred and twenty thousand dollar curriculum? So, yeah, the spending last year was much higher, which is why Cindy and I are working very closely. On future purchases, future spendings. We're dialing in on. How things are going to be spent and there's going to be a process which before there was not. So.
Do we have a reserve right now?
No.
Then that, and we have no S or funds up?
No.
So.
I was.
So the.
General fund, you can only keep a small portion anyways. Your general fund, you can only keep like ten percent.
No, I just, after the conversation, we've had two years of S or funds to kind of lean back on for certain things and we don't have that anymore. Right. And we don't have a reserve fund.
You don't have a general fund reserve?
No, it was spent last year.
The entire, because at, at the end of twenty twenty one, it was like ninety percent of general fund expenditures.
At the end of what?
Twenty twenty or just the year twenty twenty one.
Well, it wasn't different. So, no. And then the other thing, we got hit with the audit finding of thirty thousand dollars from the previous clerk. So that, and that actually overthrew our general fund the previous year, which had to be corrected out of this year's general fund. So that was thirty thousand dollars that we didn't account for that had to be corrected.
How do you feel moving into this budget about? Being able to meet this budget's constraints?
I think working with Cindy, I think will be. I think will be fine. It's just getting past. You know, the way things work.
A consistent approval process for how money was spent.
Right.
Purchase orders were not used, purchase requisitions were not used. From what I'm understanding, just talking to the ladies at the office who handle those things. If someone came in and said, hey, I need some supplies, can I have a credit card to go to Walmart? Sure, go get what you need. We won't be doing things like that this year. Everything will go on a purchase order and everything. I will look at everything that is spent before it is spent. Policy even goes as far as to say that if a teacher does purchase something without authorization, they can be held personally responsible for that purchase. And I know that there are staff who are concerned about that because they, they don't want to feel like they're not getting the things that they need. But I think we, we have some new learning to do around things that we need versus things that we want. And we're going to have to operate. I know that things have operated lean, but they're going to have to operate leaner this year. Because. We, we can't overspend. There's no S or money to fall back on. It's gone. I. I also don't believe in putting more of a burden on the taxpayers than what's absolutely necessary. And. I. Feel it is a personal responsibility to stand by every financial decision that is made in this district. And that will be. The hope at times for some people. But. I. I'm not happy to say no, but I'm very willing to say no if that is what is necessary. So. Whereas we don't necessarily know what the exact expenditures will be. One of the, the primary things that we will be looking at is what money was spent in what departments over the last couple of years. What is essential? And also asking teachers for. For the justification, why do you need this? The, the principals and I had a conversation today about curriculum materials. Are we supplanting or supplying, supplanting or. Supplementing and being sure that we're not supplanting things that we've already purchased. If we have a map curriculum. It's very expensive and it's adopted, approved and accepted, that we shouldn't be purchasing additional map curriculum. That's not good financial spending and it goes contrary to what we've agreed to do with what we've adopted. So looking at. Curriculum materials, different programs, subscription based things and. Just holding those to more scrutiny and not just from the financial standpoint, but also from the student impact of. Buying, buying more map stuff doesn't necessarily produce better map outcomes. So. So there will be a little bit more scrutiny and more questioning about what money is being spent, why? And the funding. Sources that it will come from. Now. In addition to what we have, I'm looking at trying to find additional grants. The state federal programs director thought I was joking when I said I printed out the E grants handbook, get credit. Said no one's ever done that, but I knew. So. I printed it out for the binder and read through it. There are a couple of things in it that I think we may be eligible for, but it's just going to be a matter of asking the right questions and doing the right applications. So. In addition to staying within this budget, one of my goals for the year is also to seek out additional funding sources. And additional grants to add to what we already have. So that we're able to meet the needs of our students and be financially responsible to our taxpayers.
I know this is new for you and Cecilia, what, what is your comfort level with moving forward with this budget?
This budget? I, I feel comfortable. With this. I am concerned about ninety six percent salaries because they're. You know, schools operate with people. I mean, we're, we're a people based industry. I understand that. But we also operate with electricity and water and garbage pickup. And we have to serve food and only so much of that. There are expenses there, so. we have the day to day operational things that we have to cover as well. And to do those things with 4% is, is going to be very tight. And then looking at future salary increases. That's that will be a long conversation for another meeting. But based on what I have looked at, we will be able to pay the bills to this budget and but there, there are things that classrooms will probably have to cope about. Because teachers have gotten and, and it's not just a West Valley thing. It's happening all over. The Esther money was, was nice and it was very helpful, but it made people very comfortable in spending habits.
And I agree. I mean, when the, when the money's there, you know, it's, I think it's prudent to put it to use rather than
Right.
Let it sit idle. I don't disagree that the charged revenues are necessary and needed. It's just from my perspective, it would be, I think it would be prudent for the board to have more oversight you know, budgeted annual expenditure, you know, on a line item basis. So we can provide insight into how potentially things other than absolute necessities are, are allocated.
And, and that, that's something I could definitely appreciate and, and understand. It's just not something that we're prepared with or can be prepared with very quickly just because of other obligations.
Yeah.
It is definitely something that we can have prepared by September meeting. I, I don't and I'm not, I'm not one to, to try to sugarcoat or make promises that I can't keep. I don't think we can have a line item expenditure budget ready for you by the end of this week.
Yeah, no, and I think that's, I think that's reasonable. And I, I'm more comfortable now through the discussion. I think, you know, that, I think if that's feasible, I'm comfortable with that. I think it's reasonable. You know, I'd also like, and I asked for this, right, maybe talked about this a couple of meetings ago or something, is, is as we move forward through this fiscal year, is to take, you know, this, this line item expenditure list and then when you present us with the bills,
Right.
Can we allocate these? So then, yeah, so then we can understand, like, are we
Yeah.
eroding the general fund?
The other thing to think about on this line item thing is it's not in stone. What's in stone is the bottom line, the 5 million. That's in stone. So those line items throughout the year can change. So let's say we assume we might need $5,000 in whatever line it might be. But then we actually only need 3,500 of it. So we could actually spend that 1,500 something else, as long as that bottom line number isn't overspent.
Yeah.
So those numbers are fluid. I mean, those
And I, and I get that, obviously, I mean, you know, but I guess my point is, hey, if we're, if you have an extra $1,500, that's great. I'm more concerned about
Yeah.
Having, you know, 10,000
Yeah.
Rather than the 5,000.
So, and the comment I made at the last meeting was just that over the next couple of months, I'll provide those documents to you, but we'll have to, I mean, the one I think I pulled last week to, you know, for a budget, it was 162 pages. So it's going to take a few different meetings to say, okay, we don't like this report. I'll try a different one the next, you know, next month, like, so we can look at them. So yeah, the next few months, that will be, you know, like a budget versus actual kind of report.
Yeah.
As long as it can be simplified so it's not 162 pages.
One thing, yeah, I mean, to me, this level of detail is great, you know, but I think moving it forward with at least the expenditure budget, you know, obviously how it balances with this and the revenues, but if we have that projected yearly expenditure budget at the next meeting, if that's possible, then each report from then, you could actually break it down into this is the percentage of that allocation. Are we on track with it going forward, either quarterly or maybe potentially do it every time you actually approve bills, but that might be a a little bit of a headache, but at least quarterly, you can compare back like, you know, after three months, we're on track or we're 10% over here, but we're 5% under here. We're doing okay. Or those kind of things could be helpful to see.
And that's something that we would be monitoring anyhow, because even within the, the E-grant system, which is where we have 5% of our federal money, it allows for some movement through, over the course of the year. What Cecilia's pointing out, we may anticipate that we're going to spend $5,000 with some type of professional development, but then we end up not doing it. Even within that grant system, we can go in and file an amendment and have money moved around. But that's going to take monitoring the money to know where it's needed, to know where to prove it to. And then do the appropriate documentation that goes along with that. So we can, we would definitely be prepared to bring in those updates and then, I know it's a little raise away, but knowing where the board stands on the level of information that you want going into next year's budget meeting. But Cecilia and I could definitely be more prepared to bring more information to this meeting than what we have now. So
I can completely understand both of you being new in these roles too. You've done phenomenal already. So yeah, and I understand where you're coming from. And next year's obviously will be easier for all of us, but I appreciate all the work you went through.
But we definitely want to be as transparent and as forthcoming as possible, not just with the board, but with the public in general, as far as how money is being spent in the school.
Would it be, I think Tina wants to say something real quick too. I just have a quick question. Do the leave payouts to the employees who retired or left last year, are they coming out of this year's budget? So when I hear that 96%, which is more than what we normally would have, do the leave payouts come out of this year's general fund budget or do the leave payouts and the benefits that get paid for a couple of years, their insurance gets paid, which is very high, is that getting paid out of the general fund or does that get paid out of a retirement reserve?
That's getting, so the benefits are getting paid out of general fund coming up. And then the retirement, are you talking about like the retirement incentive?
Yeah, anybody that left with retirement incentive or leave payout, did that carry over to this year's general?
It would carry over to the retirement fund for this year, yes. Which is separate from the general.
But their benefits are coming out of the general. So we're paying
Out of this projected year.
Yeah, for two years, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and next.
We have seven Just wondering that it's not all necessary that people are in this building when we're talking the salaries that are getting paid in benefits.
And yes, yeah, so it's all coming out of this year's. This year's general fund and then, yeah, the retirees, I think there are seven of them right now that we're paying for benefits for three years. They can be on our, our insurance. So if you guys are going to work on this on Wednesday and the trust is not where you guys are going to want to hear, but um, is there any way we could just even do like a Zoom meeting at the end of the day where we could just like get some prelim budget numbers of kind of where you think things are? And then break up submitted by Friday or Saturday? That would give you a couple of days to get it submitted? It's going to be preliminary, but yeah. I mean, I have
It would just
So it's getting closer. But then today I was going through, trying to figure out, you know, where we spent last year versus what was budgeted last year, trying to find, you know,
Right.
Where those things are and what we need to watch for this year. So that's what I ended up spending most of my day on today was like, oh, well, if we budgeted, you know, 150,000 for this, but we actually spent 180,000. So am I enough by putting it at 180 this year? So without having to, you know, worry about overspending in certain line items.
Well, I'm assuming you guys are starting at the 5 million, whatever's on this, right? And then working back from there, saying these are the mandatory expenditures and this is what left over and then we're going to play with that, right?
Yes.
So I think you guys building an expenditure budget is going to be based off of this anyway.
Yeah.
We just want to ensure moving forward that we see that budget and then also have a report back either quarterly or each month to where those percentages are lying and how we're staying on track. I'd be comfortable with that at least in knowing where both of you stand and where you guys are both working on. I'd feel comfortable at least approving this. So it's not a rush for everybody to get it submitted, but
I hate the rush idea too. I understand, but she's, you know, she's got volumes line items to go through and get us some kind of totals.
And some of the line items might not even be necessary this year too. And that's the other thing I have to look at is do we really need this line? No. So where can I put that money? Where would that money be best used for in place of, you know, we budgeted 4,000 for this last year. We didn't spend it on that. We spent on this. So where should it be? So
And so that's for you and Dr. We should hash out
Yeah.
And before you give us any kind of a, of a complete
And even then, it's still
What we're looking for.
It's still
We get that, but we're not going to be so happy that other years just approve the bills. That we're, we're going to look for a little bit more of an explanation. Okay, this is, this, and we have so much more to spend in this account.
And this is a percentage of what we budgeted forward or on track versus this is a percentage and we're over this amount. And where we can potentially go under on others to make up for it. Yeah, I think that'll be super
And then our software system as well, I can put in parameters and say, okay, you know, we have $150,000 budget on this. And then when I hit that, it's going to stop, say, bing, nope, which I didn't know last year. So it's all learning. So I mean, that's another, I guess precautionary measure I'm taking is, you know, watching the software system. It says, you know, your budget isn't defined.
Before that, if we're checking it monthly.
Right, right.
Before it goes.
So I mean, that's another I guess safe precaution that I'm going to be using going forward because I didn't know. If I just got in, I start paying the bills and nobody explained to me, hey, this is what this means when it pops up like that. Just said, okay, okay. Now I learned.
Yeah, and I can tell you, sitting here this year versus last year, I feel much more comfortable with plans moving forward and the eyes that are on the plans moving forward than I was last year. And I think the reason why is because we had some of those extra funds, extra funds, and people are like, oh, whatever, we have to spend it anyway. Just do whatever.
And that was easy.
Where honestly, I think the, the eyes that are on this is much better than what we had before.
Yeah, it was a whole different mindset.
Oh, yeah.
Last year.
It was scary last year.
Yeah.
Well, and we, obviously we had to spend extra funds or we lose them, right? And so that was
Yeah.
Yeah. So we did make some purchases at the end of last year that we just kind of knew were maybe frivolous, but it was because we had to spend it anyway, but
Exactly.
This year, I think the eyeballs are a little more narrowed, which is good.
Because we couldn't put those funds in research.
Right.
That didn't work.
You lost them.
Didn't work that way. So we had to
And I think they wanted something in the technology piece that was used for a long time. That's what I was thinking, is that we put even the things that would be a long term benefit. And would be very needed, especially they should be pretty well set.
I think that's a reasonable plan though, to, to approve the, the revenues in the mills at this point and then just work on the, the, you know, detailing out the, like you said, you kind of hit, hit all the non-discretionary expenditures here and kind of filling in the rest. You know, hopefully by September and then tracking that actively through this year. I think that's a, a good approach. And I think that'll hopefully keep us all on the right track.
So we'll just play with the reports for the next couple of months and see what works and what doesn't. And then once we find one, then we'll go with it. And I'll get lucky in the first one work. But there's so many reports on that, like, I don't know.
What if you're keeping a spreadsheet to kind of keep track of expenses too for the system or whatever? I mean, honestly, another board on, that's what we have is like a spreadsheet and it's compared like the previous year and where we're at. And then we get the percentage and it's all like color coded and
Yeah, that's what I'm used to.
We look at it, you know, every month, whenever we need, and then you kind of know exactly where you're at within that line item. Yeah. And we have something similar for salaries because not all salaries come out of the same pot of money. There's some hours salaries that are that come out of title money and then there's other federal money, special education. So tracking to which programs where you think to fund salaries with is, is another kind of important thing. And tracking.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 budget report for the revenue as presented today. I'll second.
And the second tip, we approve the budget. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of?
I
I'll post.
No, I honestly, I have a good feeling about this year. Yeah, thank you guys for the, the work you're putting into it. And I think we're on the same page with this scrutiny and forward, so.
It's an overwhelming assignment, I think. I think it's
Make motion to adjourn. Are we done?
Yes.
Second.
In session, I'm in favor of adjournment.
Great, off the record. On the record, I don't care, but I didn't sign up to speak.
No, not to